Click.
Click on what?
The name.
On the person?
Person's name and it'll click the light on.
And then you gotta click them off too, right?
The name.
You mean harsh little touchscreen?
Yeah, you could actually just...
Good evening. My name's Chuck Iovin and I'll be presiding over this evening's meeting of the planning board, May tenth, two thousand twenty-three. I'd like to say at the beginning that I have in a butter conflict with eighty-nine Hancock Street, so I will not be sitting on that hearing. And instead, Ronnie Raj Verma and Stephanie Stone will be sitting in on eighty-nine Hancock Street. Also, we have a member who is out ill for Lincoln Street, so Ronnie Raj Verma will sit in on Lincoln Street in place of Diane Chua. First thing I'm gonna do is for those in attendance, under the provisions of the open meeting law, attendees are informed that this meeting is being recorded by M A T V, Urban Media Arts, formerly M A T V. I have not been notified that any other video or audio recording of this meeting will occur. The next thing we will do is we will take a roll call, starting with Ronnie Raj Verma.
Ronnie Raj Verma, Ronnie Raj Verma, planning board.
Reece Gray, planning board.
Toward Dutch Kabraslase, planning board.
Karen Tenucci, planning board.
Chuck Iovin, planning board.
Eric McCush, planning board.
Pat Hayes, planning board.
Eric Henry, planning board.
Henry Suce, planning board.
Stephanie Stone, planning board.
Thank you very much. We have two hearings on the agenda for this evening. The first one we will hear is fifty-seven, fifty-nine Lincoln Street, and the second one will be eighty-nine Hancock Street. Ken, if you could read the notice for fifty-seven, fifty-nine Lincoln Street, please.
The planning board, the Malden Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the Herbert L. Jackson Council Chamber, Malden City Hall, two fifteen Pleasant Street, Malden, Mass. At seven P. M. On Wednesday, May tenth, two thousand twenty-three, on the petition of Daniel Halloran, permit number C M I D zero five four zero seven seven dash two zero two three, seeking a special permit under Title twelve, Chapter twenty-eight, Section zero one zero D one of the Code of the City of Malden, to extend, structurally change, and alter a pre-existing non-conforming use and property in the Residence A zoning district, namely to construct a dormer addition to the third floor of the existing four-family dwelling at the property known as and numbered fifty-seven to fifty-nine Lincoln Street, Malden, and by city assessor's parcel I D. Number zero two one 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 eight eight two five.
Thank you, Ken. Is the petition a present? If you'd come up and if you could give your name and residential address for the record and sign the sign-in sheet printed out, so we have the correct spelling and correct numbers and things.
My residence or the residence?
Your residence.
Daniel Halloran, residence is Fort Hill Street in Stonem, Mass.
Yes, if you could tell us what you'd like to, what the petition is and what your proposal is, describe it to us, tell us what the timeline is, different things like that.
Okay, thank you. Well, my name is Daniel Halloran. I'm representing fifty-seven, fifty-nine Lincoln Street. I'm here, here seeking a special permit to construct a dormer on the top floor. Currently, there is an existing dormer. We propose to increase the size of the dormer, as you can see in the photos. We will pick up approximately forty-one square feet on each side. Square footage seems low, because the architect and structural engineer, heavy six-foot knee wall opposite the dormer to carry the other side of the roof. Also, the stairs did not meet the code. The new stairs also took from the square footage. We will not be gaining much square footage, but we will be gaining headroom and natural light. The existing space on the top had two bedrooms on each side, having, having egress windows on the gable side accessible by the sidewalk ways. The new egress windows will be in the front, noting there will only be one bedroom on each side, not two, and the building will have a full fire suppression system sprinklers. The other square footage in the basement already exists, but we're proposing to finish one room on each side to add a laundry and a half a bath. This allows us to insulate the space. It would give us much cleaner space opposed to the dirt that comes from the old stone foundation. There are several structural columns, twenty-four to be exact, twelve on each side, but we still feel it is worth it to finish the basement, none of which has been presented here today affects the footprint of the building or the height of the building, meaning the ridge, and there'll be no additional bedrooms added. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have a few questions, if I could. With regard to the, I was looking at the plans, and with regard to the mechanical utilities that are currently in the basement for what appears to be the whole building. I don't see anything for the bottom unit on each side, and, but I do see on the third floor, you have a space on the plan called mechanical. Is the mechanical on the third floor gonna service the whole building?
No, it is not. When I purchased the building, the building was already fully gutted, and there was no furnaces or anything existing at the time. So, the way we propose to do it, where we had to treat it as commercial space where it was fully gutted and do a fire suppression system, we're gonna have one center entrance, and the center of the building will be the common area, which allows us to put the furnaces for the first floor in the basement on each side. That will supply the first floor in the basement, with the furnaces being in the basement, and on the third floor, it will supply the, the top space in the second floor will be one unit.
Okay, so the, the mechanical equipment will be in the basement?
Yes, for the, for the first floor.
For the first floor, first and second floor unit, basement and first floor units?
Yes, correct.
On both sides?
On both sides.
Okay, and then the second and third floors will be serviced from above?
Correct.
On that one. Okay, thank you. I noticed also, do you plan on taking down that three-foot fence in the front?
We're gonna put a new fence, and I've spoke to the, to the neighbors. That three-foot fence that's there, we're gonna set it back. I mean, keep it on the same line, but we're gonna bring it to open up the front of, opening a little wider.
So make access into your parking area better?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't sure if you were taking the whole thing down.
No, we're gonna leave a fence that's the width of a car for their parking on both sides.
Will that be a tight turn? How?
It won't be the way we propose to do it.
Okay.
I mean, we only did one side now to get the dumpsters in there, and it, and it really flows quite easily.
Okay, when I went by, there weren't, there weren't any cars there.
Yeah, you're right.
I always had a hard time visualizing how they were, if you didn't take it down, how you, they were gonna get in there.
Right, but we, it's gonna be half the length, half of whatever, you know, the length that it is now.
Okay. I noticed also on the plan that in the northeast end of the lot, there's a patio of some sort that's labeled snow storage. there's a patio of some sort that's labeled "snow storage."
Well, yeah, that slab was existing and they required us to, to.
Right, but how are you gonna get, I guess, I couldn't see how practical having the snow storage in the upper left if the driveway was in the front.
I'm also in the, you know, snow removal and snow business for my construction company. So we have access to Bobcats and we have lots of contracts that we actually have to remove all the snow all the time. But to move that snow to that back corner wouldn't be a problem for us.
Okay, so you're planning on bringing in outside quick?
Yeah, if need be, yes. We can just move it with the Bobcat and bring it back to that corner. And the slab was always there, so we just designated that as the area where we had to pick somewhere.
Okay. The other thing I noticed is that there's no open space plan that was included?
We did do that. We, we did have an open space plan, I believe. I picked it up last night with the surveyor. He put the square footage of the open space?
Yeah, I, I didn't see it on the plan and it wasn't in the staff report.
It's a, if I may, Mr. Chair, the plan was submitted, was received last night, so it was after the staff report was finalized. So you have a plan in the package. It's dated May ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Should be highlighted, just to make sure you're looking at the correct plan. It should be the top plan that was in the package, May ninth, two thousand twenty-three. And that indicates that there is, where the snow storage is and also the open space is sixteen hundred square feet. Also added the rear yard setback, which was missing from the original plan. So you should have that. That was right on the top. I think it's this one.
That's the one I have.
Yeah, right there, May ninth, two thousand twenty-three. So it, May ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Doesn't have a revision date, it just says a new date.
And where is the proposed open space? Is it this backyard area?
It's the backyard and the sidewalk ways to the backyard.
Okay, but aren't you using that for trash storage? Because it seemed pretty tight if you put those recycling bags.
One side's eight feet wide, on one side, the left side of the house is eight feet and the other side, I believe, is five feet.
Okay, oh, the side with the dumpster?
The side with the dumpster is very wide, yeah. I could actually put all the trash on that side.
Okay. You said, when you, when did you purchase the property?
I believe it was January, the first of January of twenty-three.
Okay, so you've only had a few months?
Yes.
And it was totally gutted?
Totally gutted when I purchased it.
When you purchased it. How much more work do you have to do? When do you, when do you think the interior renovations will be complete?
When we started, we were able to, to get granted a permit to start the general construction, except, you know, the permit states there was no dormer. So we were able to get started, so we have been working there.
Right, but there's still, when I glanced and I saw some two-by-fours and up walling off, but how much more needs to be done on the interior renovations excluding the dormer?
Probably two more months to come, you know. We're basically all framed and now the electricians and plumbers will get in there. And obviously the fire suppression people, they are actually permitted and they are starting on Tuesday for the fire suppression system.
Okay. And we talked about the fact that you, on the plan, it said that you were gonna do the trash bins on each side. I imagine for the two units on each of those, each of those sides? Who, who owns the, I, I know you have a twelve-foot right-of-way from Lincoln Street into your property. Who owns, do you know who owns the rest of that area?
I believe it's sixty-one Lincoln. It's a new owner also. That house was for sale. It was bought almost the same time I bought fifty-seven and fifty-nine Lincoln. So I haven't had the chance to meet them. I think it's their parents that live there.
Okay, but you, you don't own it and you don't have access to it with regard to parking?
No parking in this space. They rent the parking. It's available for rent. They rent one side. As you're coming into the driveway, the side on the right, I believe that they, they rent about maybe eight or ten spaces there. And then on the left, there's about four spaces and I think they use that for their, for their house.
For sixty-one?
Yeah, I believe it's sixty-one.
It is sixty-one.
Yeah.
Can you describe the units to me? Any of these gonna be affordable housing or is it all gonna be market rate?
Market rate. The unit's gonna be two bedrooms with a bath and a half on the first floor. And on the second floor, first and basement, if we have the basement, and the second floor would have two bedrooms, kitchen, living room, master bedroom upstairs, bathroom and the laundry upstairs.
Right. The one concern I have is that bonus room in the basement?
Well, that's, I don't know where the architect drew that in there. We're just gonna finish the room and put the laundry down there. And it's basically, I, I should have had a picture, but we, between the structural engineer and the architect, we put about twenty-four columns, twenty, twenty-four to be exact, columns in the basement to structurally make the building sound. And there's a lot of columns, but there's also gonna, we'd like to have a half a bath and a, and a laundry down there. So we figured we could sheet rock the walls and get some good insulation in there and sheet rocket and just make it a whatever room. You know, I don't know what bonus room actually means myself, but it's, I mean.
But there's a lot of column?
There's twenty-four columns, because we put some beams in the house that they carried us with structural steel down and it's, it's, yeah, there's twelve columns on each side.
So it's not like a five hundred square foot opening?
You're not gonna get any flow for anything real comfortable of, I mean, you, you know, like, maybe not even quite a living room set, you know? But it's still gonna be clean space and it's still gonna have another half a bathroom, you know, for two bedrooms and then a full bath upstairs and a half a bath downstairs and it will have a laundry down there.
Okay.
Like I said, I just didn't wanna have the room going down into the basement being a dirty, dun, you know, cobblestone, I mean, stone foundation basement. I think for as much as we have to put into it to keep up with the structural stuff and a fire suppression system, we gotta try to maximize all we can, you know? So just trying to make it nicer, you know, it's making the space cleaner for the basement.
And you're proposing ten bedrooms, which?
Which was existing, that's what we allowed.
Which was existing, but it was probably gutted when you bought it or were the?
It was gutted, but they always understand it could never be more than ten bedrooms.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, from what I've seen on the existing plans, the way the, we piled up, it looked like they had two bedrooms on each, in the attic and almost two on the first floor for the second floor units. Whether we're using them as all four bedrooms, with those four rooms divided off, to me, it looked like it was four bedrooms.
Right.
We're only putting one in the attic now, on the, on the third floor space.
Okay, that's all the questions I had at the moment. Does anyone else have any questions for the petitioner? Any other questions for the petitioner? Michelle, do you have anything for the petitioner?
No, not at this time.
Eric Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It seems, sir, that you've, you've done a considerable amount of, of work to this point and I'm really just trying to understand why you need us if you've already done all of this work.
I haven't touched the, I need to do the, construct a dormer on the third floor. Right now, I haven't touched the third floor. I mean, I could build to the point where the third floor would get me some windows and some natural light and a little more headroom. Not much square footage though, because we're give and take, we're taking from one side, getting square footage on the other side, but we're gaining cubic feet, we're gaining some headroom and some more windows.
Understood, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just to clarify for the board. So the existing four-family is exempt from current zoning. However, once the property is being extended, the dormer is considered an extension. It's creating additional living space. And also, the finishing of the basement is considered an extension. So for those two components, he needs a special permit to move forward.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Is there anything you'd like to add, Mr. Halloran?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you very much. You can sit down, we'll continue with the hearing.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone that would like to speak in favor? Michelle, do you have anything to read in favor?
Yes. I have an email received today dated May tenth, two thousand twenty-three. It reads, "To the honorable members of the planning board, I write today in favor of the petition to improve fifty-seven dash fifty-nine Lincoln Street in Ward Three, which I represent on the city council. This project will update the appearance of a property that has grown rundown in recent years and will add needed housing units to our neighborhood while accommodating the necessary parking requirements in our ordinances. This project is situated within a five-minute walk to the Malden Center MBTA station, our vibrant downtown in the soon-to-be-converted Courthouse Arts and Cultural Center on Summer Street, making it an ideal location for housing. I support the planning board's review of this application and I am fully satisfied, after speaking to the petitioner personally, that all requirements will be abided by and all restrictions accepted and completed as shown. While I have not received any opposition communication from abutters or residents of the area, I do welcome folks to reach out to me with any construction concerns as the project proceeds and I look forward to seeing the renovated property adding value to the street and ward. Respectfully, signed Amanda Lenahan, Ward Three City Councilor."
Thank you, is that it?
Yes.
And the last call for anyone who would like to speak in favor of the petition. Seeing and hearing none, declare that part of the hearing closed. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition of this petition? Anyone in opposition? Michelle, do you have anything to read in opposition?
No. No.
Seeing and hearing no one else, that would like to speak in opposition, declare that part of the hearing closed. Michelle, would you take us through your staff report, please?
So as you heard, the, well, first I'll reference the planning report and recommendation dated May tenth, two thousand twenty-three. It's incorporated here and by reference, even if I don't read all of it into the record, it is incorporated into the record of this hearing and meeting. So the property is the site of a two-and-a-half-story building. It's vacant, it's under renovation, we've heard about. That renovation excludes the new dormer, any new bedrooms, any new parking, and as I mentioned, also the basement expansion or conversion to residential living space. Interior demolition began without permits in two thousand twenty-one, continued under a permit that was issued. Interior renovation began again in two thousand twenty-two by the next owner. And then finally, we have this owner who is working under the current permit, an application that's before you. All access to the property is via this existing right-of-way over the abutting property at sixty-one Lincoln Street. I did look at the deed to the subject property and I do see this right-of-way referenced for the usual purposes of a street or way in this strip of land that's twelve feet wide, extending to the premises, from the premises, to the premises from Lincoln Street. It also talks about the right to keep and maintain the lot through that lot, a sewer that's laid from Lincoln Street to these premises. Petitioner, as you heard, is the owner and developer. You heard about the dormer addition. I've given you the breakdown here of the existing number of bedrooms, proposed number of bedrooms, their locations, approximate square footage, et cetera. You see the overall increase in residential living space is approximately twenty-eight percent. Same number of bedrooms, same number of units. The plans that were submitted are referenced here, with the exception, the site plan that's referenced here dated April tenth, two thousand twenty-three, has been updated and, as I mentioned earlier, you have the updated site plan dated May ninth, two thousand twenty-three, prepared by the same surveyor. I've listed the plans that were submitted. You all have copies of those plans. I won't read through that. The property is located in the Residence A zoning district. The existing four-family residential use is prohibited in this district. It predates the current ordinance. It's considered pre-existing non-conforming. The proposed extension of the pre-existing non-conforming use may be allowed by special permit. There is a certificate of occupancy on file for this property issued by the city in nineteen ninety-three. Direct abutters to the north are single-family dwellings and a two-family dwelling. To the west are a two-family dwelling. To the south, a multifamily dwelling with twenty-two units. To the east, the rear yard of a vacant commercial storefront, that's at one twenty, one twenty-four Clifton Street. On the other side, to the east of which is the MBTA right-of-way, where we have the active rapid transit and commuter rail lines. Surrounding land use is a residential, mostly single and two families. There are several three- and four-family dwellings and multifamily dwellings. In terms of dimensional controls, the existing building grossly violates dimensional controls for lot area, frontage, and density. I noted likely open space because at the time, we did not have the number of, or the amount of open space. We do have that now as being sixteen hundred square feet. Violates both side and rear yard setbacks. It does violate open space as well and predates the current requirements of the ordinance. It's considered pre-existing non-conforming. The proposal extends the non, this non-conforming building. Again, it may be allowed by special permit. The proposal maintains all existing violations and I will add including open space. So the open space indicated on the plan is sixteen hundred square feet. What's required is two thousand. It is not designated where that is specifically as the chair asked and as the petitioner answered. It's in the side yards and rear yard. I did just a quick calculation, subtracted the building footprint, the amount of paving for parking and the other paving of the front yard and that still leaves two thousand one hundred eighty-nine square feet that's not occupied by paving or building. You didn't subtract the concrete pad, but I do believe that there probably is about sixteen hundred square feet of open space, based on those rough calculations I just did. So that's a four hundred square foot deficiency, which is a...
Twenty, twenty percent?
Twenty percent. So we'll just update that for the record. So four hundred square feet and the proposal maintains that. So the deficiencies, a lot area, frontage, front yard setback, side yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks, open space, building coverage, density are all maintained. Parking requirements, the existing four-family requires six spaces under the applicable requirements. That was an old requirement, one point five parking spaces per unit. It's considered pre-existing non-conforming. It's exempt from the current requirements to provide ten spaces or one space per bedroom. The existing parking lot was not provided. The front yard is paved. It does appear large enough to provide onsite parking for three to four vehicles and under the proposal and as shown on the site plan, four spaces will be provided onsite in the front yard. Access to the parking spaces is via this existing right-of-way over the abutting property at sixty-one Lincoln Street that we just talked about. The spaces do not have the required direct access to an aisle of the required width, drive or street. An access or egress for the spaces will likely typically require maneuvering over other paved areas of the abutting property beyond the twelve-foot right-of-way. So it is a non-conforming layout. Snow storage, the approximate amount is depicted on site in the rear yard. It's not adjacent to the spaces as required. As you heard, petitioner intends to move the plowed snow to that location. Landscaping of yard areas, so most of the front yard is currently paved. That is in violation of the requirement that a minimum of fifty percent of all yard areas be devoted to lawn and landscaping, not paving. That condition appears to predate the current ordinances, so it may be considered pre-existing non-conforming. Under the proposal, that will be maintained as paved, so the violation will continue. The finding required to grant special permit, this board would need to find that the proposal is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. Do you want me to go forward with the recommendation?
Yes, please.
So provided you make that finding, that the proposal is not more detrimental to the neighborhood, the recommendation would be to grant the petition for a special permit, subject to the following conditions. One, all development shall be as per plans, except as modified by these conditions. Two, the maximum number of bedrooms is ten. Three, the front porches and rear porch deck may not be enclosed. Four, basement may be used for storage utilities, laundry, and... Four, basement may be used for storage utilities, laundry, and living or playroom. No bedroom or kitchen are allowed. Five, install and maintain all open spaces, lawn, grass, and landscaped in yard areas as per plan. Paving shall be limited to the parking area shown on the plan.
Thank you, Michelle. Do you understand those conditions that are being proposed?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Michelle? No questions? Is there a motion? Kenny Tanucci.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant the special permit subject to the five conditions.
Thank you. Kenny's made a motion to grant the special permit with the five proposed conditions. Henry Susi.
I'd like to second that motion, please.
And Henry seconded it. Thank you. Let me try to get ahead of it here.
Kenny Tanucci?
Yes.
Tawadaj Kepesalasi?
Yes.
Risa Gray?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
Yes.
Eric Henry?
Yes.
Eric McCush?
Yes.
Henry Susi?
Yes.
Ronnie Raj Verma?
Yes.
Chaka Yobin?
Yes. The petition has been granted with conditions. Thank you. As I mentioned, I am an abutter to the 89 Hancock Street, so I will not be participating in this hearing. In my absence, Stephanie Stone will be participating, and Ronnie Raj Verma will be participating in Diane Chuha's absence. I will turn the hearing over to Kenny Tanucci.
Michelle, would you read the notice?
Yes, the Malden Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the Herbert L. Jackson Council Chamber, Malden City Hall, 215 Pleasant Street, Malden, Mass. at 7:00 p.m. on Wednesday, May 10th, 2023, under the petition of Eusebio Aruda, permit application, CMID 056048-2023, seeking a special permit under Title 12, Chapter 28, Section 010D1 of the Code of the City of Malden, to extend, structurally change, and alter pre-existing nonconforming use and property in the Residence A zoning district, namely to construct a dormer addition to the third floor of the existing four-family dwelling at the property known as and numbered 89 Hancock Street and by City Assessor Parcels ID 079355514.
Thank you, Michelle. Is the petitioner or attorney present?
I'm...
No, just speak into the microphone and sign in with your name and home address.
Yes, my name is Tyrone Yang. I'm an architect. I'm here with Eusebio Aruda, who is the owner of the building at 89 Hancock Street. And he's also the next door, the abutter next door. Lives in the building next door. And we, I do have a board with photos and a easel. Is that something I should set up so that you guys, so that you and the audience can see that?
Yeah, sure. You can set that up.
He did give his address.
Should I do that?
And did you give your address? You wrote your address down, but can you give your address?
Yes, my, where I live in Somerville, I'm at 19 Pearson Avenue, Somerville, Massachusetts, 02144.
And that's your home address?
That's my home address, yes.
Thank you. Yeah, and you, oh, sorry. You can set that up. Sure.
Also, so this, these are just some images of the proposed changes. I also have 11-by-17s. Is that something I should hand out to the board to be able to see a little more?
You can bring those up.
Just watch the steps. You can just pass them to the end, and we'll pass them around. Thank you.
Feel free to begin.
To go ahead. Okay. Yeah, so 89 Hancock Street is a nonconforming use residential building that has, currently has four units in it, in a total of five bedrooms. And so the, what we're proposing to do is to add dormers to two sides of the, of the top floor. The overall height of the building would remain the same. Number of bedrooms and bathrooms would all remain the same. The, there's going to be some interior reconfiguration on the top floor, but the other floors, first and second floors, that have livable units and then, and the basement are going, those units are all going to be untouched.
Okay, and the, on the top floor, so yes, you have, it's really three dormers that you're adding?
There's, there's an existing dormer that goes over the staircase that comes up from the second floor to the top floor unit. The dormer also partially goes over the, one of the existing bathrooms.
Right, so the dormer on either side of that will tie into the existing roof line?
Yes, yes.
Of that central dormer that's already there?
Right, the central ridge that runs from front to back.
Okay. And those two on the side, they're like a shed, shed-type dormer? It's a flat, you know, just a flat pitched roof?
Yes, the proposed, yes, the proposed dormers are shed dormers.
Whereas the other one is, is, it's got a pitched, pitched roof?
Yeah, gable at a 90 degrees. And so one of the, one of the reasons for this is just to have some livable headroom. There's a photo of an existing bathroom that we have here. I don't know if, I can pass that around if it's easier to see, but basically what we're showing here is that the toilet is under the existing roof, which is a little bit on the low side, so you can, you can sit there, but it's not, it's a little more headroom would make this a much better, much better space. And so those, I mean, that's, that's just an illustration of the reason we're doing this. It's just to make the, make this unit a more livable space.
Okay, and no construction or anything is started yet, right?
No, no, no construction has started.
Because I did notice in the pictures on the site, there is a lot of, some building materials and, and, you know, equipment, fencing, and things like that.
Yeah, I, well, it's, it's, I mean, it would be in anticipation of this, but also the owner has a construction business, and he lives next door.
Okay.
So this is some of his, some of his equipment. But I think, I think we corresponded with Michelle Romero that if, if this doesn't get approved, then we'd be happy to remove it from the site if needed. But I think, I think the, we were, I think Ms. Romero's instructions were that if it doesn't, we could keep it there until the decision. Is that right?
If I may, Mr. Chair, so I was told that it's related, and it's going to be used, the materials and equipment for the project if it's approved. It doesn't, or it shouldn't have anything to do with the fact that he has a contractor's business and he lives next door. You can't store that on residential property.
Okay, right.
So as long as it's related to the project...
It would be used for this project if it gets approved.
It did look like, to me, Mr. Chair, there was a lot of material, concrete blocks. It seemed like more than just for the project, but we're being told it's for the project, and as long as it's, you know, all going to be removed either after the project's done or if the project doesn't move forward, it will need to be removed. Because again, you can't use residential property for a contractor's yard.
Correct, yeah. There's temporary fencing, water beds, Masonry materials and things that don't appear to be part of this project. So that's why I wanted to find out.
Okay, yeah, no, thanks.
Okay, all right. Can you give us an idea on the timeline? Or when do you think you'd be able to begin? And how long it would take to do the property?
I guess, I wonder if...
It will take around six months.
Yeah, actually, if you, if you're the owner, if you would come up, just introduce yourself, sign in.
My name is Eusebio Aruda. I live in 85 Hancock Street, next door.
Okay.
Been there for about 11 years now. I bought this property about two and a half years ago, and I'm pretending to do a good facelift on the exterior. We pretend to removing all the vinyl siding and do a hardy planking along with the all-new landscape.
Okay, just a reminder, can you sign in and put your address down as well? All right, so yeah, so you know, there is no, you'll be doing cosmetic work to the building aside from the, aside from the dormers. And how long do you think it'll take you? Like, when would you start, and how long would you anticipate? About six months? And assuming this gets, the petition gets granted, you'll be, when would you begin?
As soon as possible.
Okay, all right. And you're a contractor, so would you be doing some of the work yourself?
90% of it will be done by us.
By you, okay. I don't have any other questions. I mean, do you have anything else to add? Or your presentation complete?
I don't know.
Okay.
If you want, Mr. Chair, if he could maybe just walk through the open space that was provided late, so that's why it's not in the staff report, there is a supplement. But if you, I don't know if he wants to add anything about that, or...
Yeah, actually, good point, Michelle. Sorry. Because the open space, if you can talk to that, that plan that came out? From yesterday.
Yeah, so it was updated. So right now, there's a, there's the building itself, and in the back, there's also an existing garage, and then existing marked out are six, six parking spaces in the back area. And then in, in stipple or dotted areas are the landscape, some of the landscape open area, which there's some in the front along, and there's some on the left side of the plot plan, and some in the back area as well. So none of, none of that, like, that, that's the, that's not, none of that is we're planning to change unless that's something that you require.
Okay, are you going to be resurfacing any of the paving or anything? So it's just going to stay the way it is?
It's going to stay the way it is.
Okay, how about the section in the front? The landscaped gravel area, that 509 square feet in the front?
Yeah, when I bought this property, the previous owner had taken the, that landscaping and use it as a parking space. So since I took over, it's, no one parks there, but it's there. So when, my plan is, if this goes forward, is to do that, put the grass back and do a retaining wall, because that's, that section is lower than what it needs to be.
Okay, so you'd restore the grass area?
Yes.
And the landscaping on the front?
Yeah, both sides, because on the other side also, it's all gravel also.
And you're increasing the, I think, the number of parking spots?
No, no, the parking spots, it's the same as I, as I had it.
Okay, so there are already six existing back there.
Exactly, yes.
And then the garage too as well. You're going to be cleaning that out?
The two garages will be used for parking later on. I just need to repair the garage. The garage cannot drive in.
Okay, thank you. But anything else you'd like to add?
I'm good.
Okay, before, well, I know, but in favor or against, or from the board?
From the board.
Okay, does anyone on the board have any questions for the petitioner? Or is it an architect? No? They can sit down.
Yeah, if everything's complete, say yes.
Yeah, so if you're complete, then you can sit, and then we're going to turn it over to the next part of the hearing, which is, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Please step up, and I'll give you name, address, sign in for the record.
Good evening. I'm Peg Crowe. I'm the Woodwin City Councilor, and I live at 9 Hancock Street. And I'm here in favor of the petition. Kind of like we heard about Lincoln Street, there is going to be no additional bedrooms. It will allow natural light on that third floor, and I saw some of the pictures of how small it is up there. And although I was going to say no more square foot, but now I know that a dormer does, so it's 210 square feet added. This property has been run down over the last few years, and it really has been going down pretty quickly over the last few. And so I do think, as again, that the petitioner is the construction manager, owner, is the next-door neighbor, although he's not living on the property, he's, you know, right adjacent to it. And so when we were talking about it, he, why he purchased it when he did, he did say because he wanted it, really to revitalize it and sort of, you know, make sure that the neighborhood looked really, really nice in. He owns that, the brick house right next door. And I was really excited about the landscaping that's happening out in front because that gravel just kind of looks down and all the refreshing. And I do think having this piece of property revitalized is an asset to the neighborhood. So I'm in favor of this petition.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of this project? Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of this project? Or the petition? Nope, no one else to speak in favor. Michelle, do you have anything to add in favor?
No, nothing to read, no.
Okay, seeing and hearing, no one else, I'd like to speak in favor or declare that part of the hearing closed. To move on, is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? Please step forward, give your name and address and the microphone and sign in as well.
My name is Rosemary Bagleyall. Can I give you two minutes of background?
Yes, of your address, your address as well, please.
One seventy Emerald Street, Malden.
Okay, thank you.
I'm here as an abbot because I have, my family has owned Belmont Street, the same block as this house would be on, or since nineteen twenty-six. I've owned twenty-one Tough Street for sixty years. And I presently live on the other side of Malden. So I have a brother that abuts his house. I have a, that lives on Newbury Street. I have a sister that lives on Akon Street, another abbot. My family that lives on twenty-one Tough Street is totally family-owned. Belmont Street is totally family-owned. So you can see how many times I must make trips back and forth to that ward. That's a specific section.
Which number, Belmont Street?
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine Belmont, thank you.
Yep. It's on the Everett side, but it's still the street, okay? That's where I grew up. Now, I think a four-family there is sufficient and I don't want to see any chances of enlarging and putting more people in the area. If any of you people have to travel from one side of Malden to the other, you will know what I'm talking about. You can't get there from here. If that expression is honestly true now in Malden. I come down Medford Street, now they've enlarged all the stores, all the housing above those stores, it was allowed. It was allowed. There was nothing we could do. You come down anytime during the day, especially if there's traffic, you can't get down Main Street. You can't get from Belmont Street to Medford Street. You can't get there. There's one lane of traffic. You're supposed to have two lanes of traffic. When you get to eighty-one Cross Street, which family used to live in, there's a driveway to go in the backyard without two houses back there. It says some crazy word. It's not even, it doesn't even have a name of a street on there anymore. But you can't get around the corner. All the spaces are gone for the stores and the traffic coming down Main Street only has one lane. All of a sudden, they're down to one lane, they can't move anywhere. And you want to, I don't trust anybody. I'm not saying give them more space. More space to an investor, anybody near it, is money. They want money and it's going to eventually be, a half a bath is going to, without you knowing it, be a full bath. Why do you need more space? If you only bought the building how long ago? That's what you bought. If you bought what you bought and you knew what you were going to do, don't tell me two years later that you're going to enlarge for what? So they have more headroom? My kids went on a bathroom that was small. And I have nine kids and every, about half of them, all right? And you make what you've got. What you have is what you do and you make it. You don't all of a sudden say, I'm going to put a bath, a half a bath in the bathroom, in the basement for cleanliness. Clean it up without a bathroom. I'm just begging you, don't put more in this city. It can't hold it. Eventually, you're going to wind up with fire problems, all kinds of problems. Because everything is enlarged. The people buy property today and right away, they're right before you, they want to do it over, headroom cleanliness. I'm just saying, please. This shouldn't be. He bought a four-family, that's what he bought. You saw it when you looked at it, you know what you bought. Don't tell me now you're going to put dormers on. And you're going to not, oh, we're not getting bigger rooms. You, you, you're doing it for a reason. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there, is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition to this petition? Anyone else? Seeing and hearing, actually, Michelle, do you have anything to read in opposition?
Yes, I have one letter dated May ninth, twenty twenty-three that was received this afternoon. It's from Ricky Tom, ninety-eight Hancock Street. It reads, Dear Malden Planning Board, I am writing to express my strong opposition to Eusebio F. Aruda's request for special permit, permit application, C M I D O five six oh four eight. It references the ad notice. Allowing them to construct a dormer raises the concern of this property becoming a problematic illegal five or more family dwelling. This was the problem with ninety-four dash ninety-six Hancock Street, when the planning board allowed them to construct a dormer on the third floor of their existing two-family dwelling. They made the entire third floor into an illegal three-family dwelling and they ultimately got caught and had to remove all illegal work. I didn't know eighty-nine Hancock Street is a four-family dwelling until I received the public hearing letter in the mail. Allowing them to construct a dormer will create more living spaces resulting in more tenants contributing to the current major parking problem at Hancock Street. Every year, there is a one-sided, even side-only parking problem with too many vehicles parked in front of our houses all the time causing accidents, safety problems and poor sanitation. These vehicles are parked either too close or block the driveway, block the entrance of our driveways causing view obstruction, making it extremely dangerous, difficult and hazardous for us to enter and exit our driveways. They also park at the same spot and never move for over three days or a week. These vehicles also keep blocking the street sweepers from doing their jobs, so trash accumulates and hardly gets removed. And the street in front of our houses is always dirty, filthy, unsanitary and unsightly. These vehicles also keep blocking the snowplows from doing their job, so the snow never gets removed from the street in front of our driveways. I urge you to reject their request for a special permit. Constructing a dormer on the third floor of eighty-nine Hancock Street will not benefit the neighborhood and only cause more problems. Allowing it will only give them an opportunity to make their new dormer into an illegal and unpermitted five or more family dwelling. Will also increase and make the existing parking problem worse at Hancock Street. We don't want more vehicles parked here. There are already too many here causing problems. Sincerely signed Ricky Tom. And that was ninety-eight Hancock Street.
Thank you, Michelle. Anything else?
No.
Do you have anything in general to add or read?
No.
Okay. Would you like to take us through the staff report and recommendations?
You should close that part of the public hearing in opposition.
Okay, seeing and hearing, no one else like to speak in opposition? And I clear that part of the hearing closed? Michelle, can you take us through the staff report?
Yes. So we heard the property is currently the site of a two and a half story dwelling. It's used as a four-family dwelling. There's an accessory garage currently used for storage. We heard about the materials being stored. Petitioner's the owner and developer. This, I'm reading from the report dated May tenth, twenty twenty-three, planning report and recommendation. I won't read everything verbatim, but it's all incorporated in, by reference to the record of this meeting. Apparently, I, so this is incorrect, there are three dormer additions, not two dormer additions, which it states. The proposal is to also renovate that floor, continue the four-family dwelling use with a total of five bedrooms. No work is being performed in the basement, first floor, second floor. I've given you the breakdown of the existing dwelling units and proposed dwelling units, how they're configured, their locations, their square footage, size. The overall increase is approximately two hundred and ten square feet, which is about four percent of the total building, seven percent of the total residential living space. The plans that were submitted are listed here. The site plan, we did receive an updated site plan, so it's by the same surveyor, but it's dated May seventh, twenty twenty-three. So that March thirtieth plan was updated. You also have the plans that were submitted. I won't read those. You have copies of them. I will note that the second living room on the first floor is mislabeled according to the petitioner, it's a dining room. The property is located in the Residence A zoning district. The existing four-family dwelling use is prohibited in this district. It predates the current ordinance, it's considered pre-existing non-conforming. The proposed extension of this use may be allowed by special permit. There, I'll note, there was an illegal hair salon operating at one point in two thousand and six, and an illegal fifth dwelling unit in the basement was removed in twenty nineteen. I will also note that the city inspected the property to confirm its legal use and issued an occupancy, certificate of occupancy for a four-family dwelling on May third, twenty twenty-three. Direct abutters to the north, a single-family dwelling to the north and west, two-family dwellings to the south, two single-family dwellings and a two-family dwelling to the east on the other side of Hancock Street, a single-family dwelling and a two-family dwelling. Surrounding land uses are residential, all single and two-family dwellings with a nearby three-family dwelling and multi-family dwelling with five units. The existing building on the property grossly violates residential controls for lot area, open space and density. It also violates frontage and side yard setback requirements. It predates the current ordinance. It's considered pre-existing non-conforming. The proposal extends the pre-existing non-conforming building. That may be allowed by special permit. The proposal maintains all known existing violations and creates no new violations, with the exception of open space. This plan did clarify the amount of open space that's being provided and the locations. You should have something, which I'm just going to get a copy of, called supplement, with today's date on it. Should be behind the staff report, so it's dated May tenth, twenty twenty-three. And it just notes that the revised plan was submitted, it makes no substantive revisions, it provides missing information regarding open space. Again, that's the plan dated May seventh, twenty twenty-three. And I've given you the breakdown here of how it's depicted, where it's located, and it's totaling twenty-two ninety-eight square feet. So it does provide more than the required amount of open space, required is two thousand. So most areas do appear to apply only, comply in part with the usable open space requirements for districts in terms of being active, pervious, visible to the public in yard setback areas. So for the record, so there is no existing open space violation and there is none created. So I want to just update that. So there's no violation of open space and none being created. In terms of parking, the existing four-family dwelling requires six spaces, one and a half spaces per unit under the applicable ordinance. The property is exempt from current requirements to provide five parking spaces or one per bedroom, but it does comply with that requirement even though it's exempt. Under the proposal, six parking spaces will be provided onsite in the rear yard with access via the existing driveway, existing curb cut on Hancock Street. Parking layout depicted on the plan is currently in existence. Layout is non-conforming as to aisle width and driveway width, it may be considered pre-existing non-conforming, exempt from those requirements. Petitioner noted when I asked that the garage currently used for storage will be renovated and used for parking in the future. Terms of snow storage, the proposed snow storage exceeds the required snow storage areas provided onsite in the rear yard adjacent to the parking spaces. Landscaping of yard areas, existing paving of the rear yard for parking and one side of the driveway, one side yard, which are proposed to be maintained, is in violation of the requirement that a minimum of fifty percent of all yard areas shall be devoted to lawn or landscaping, not paving. This condition appears to predate the current ordinance, it may be considered pre-existing non-conforming. In terms of the front yard, more than fifty percent of the front yard is currently paved for driveway or has compacted stone dust surface, which appears to have been used for parking. Under the proposal, landscaping will be installed in the yard areas excluding the driveway. So the finding required to grant a special permit, you would need to find that the proposal is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. Do you want me to go ahead and give the recommendation, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
So this was prepared prior to the public hearing, provided the board makes the required finding that it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood to grant the petition for a special permit subject to the following conditions. One, all development shall be as per plans except as modified by these conditions. Two, the maximum number of bedrooms is five. Three, basement may be used for storage utilities, laundry. Bedrooms and kitchen are not allowed. Four, install and maintain all open spaces, lawn, grass and landscaped in yard areas as per plan. Paving shall be limited to the driveway and parking areas shown on the plan. And I would also add, remove gravel and install lawn in front yard. Just so that we're clear, because the plan does label it landscaping gravel and technically landscaping doesn't have to be lawn. So we did hear from the petitioner, he intends to do that. I would put that in, I would recommend you add that as a condition to make sure that is returned to lawn and not used for parking. Or eliminates the likelihood of it being used for parking, I should say. Which isn't allowed.
All right, thank you, Michelle. Do you have anything else to add?
No.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Michelle? Okay, no questions. Does, would anyone care to make a motion? Eric Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move that we grant this petition with the, subject to the conditions that stated.
Okay, is there a second? Henry Susie?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Eric makes the motion, Henry seconds.
And that's a motion to grant a special permit with four conditions as stated.
Actually, it's a motion to make the, grant the petition with the four conditions plus the fifth one added.
Yeah, the fifth one just became part of four.
Oh, you're, you're including that in four?
I was going to include that in four, yeah.
Okay, all right, so.
That is most correct.
Okay, so it's the modified four condition.
Yes.
And you're okay with that, Eric? And Henry?
Yes.
So we'll, we'll vote in alphabetical order, starting with Swatich. We can set up the mics. And then you'll vote last. Henry's already up, so you can leave it like that. For now.
To Swatich?
Yes.
Risa?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Eric?
Henry, yeah.
Eric Henry?
Yeah. Yes.
Eric McCush?
Yes.
Henry Susie?
Yes.
Ken Antonucci, yes.
You need the other two alternates.
Both of them.
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that.
So Stephanie Stone?
Stephanie Stone?
Yes.
And Ronnie Raj Verma?
Yes.
And then you.
And Ken Antonucci, yes. Motion is passed?
Yep, nine to zero.
Nine to zero. To grant the special permit. Thank you very much. To grant the special permit for the four modified conditions. Thank you very much. Good luck.
That was interesting.
Good thing they made you assistant chair. Good thing they made you assistant chair.
Just in time.
I'm gonna turn the meeting back over to Chairman Iovin.
Thank you very much, Ken. The next order of business is an update on the status for the Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Community Preservation Committee continues to do the good work and hard efforts of the appointed membership of governors on our agenda coming forth this week, next week, I should say. We are, the Malden River Works project is coming back before us for additional funding requests. And we will also be reviewing other items and projects as they come forth, forward to us. But the Malden River Works is definitely coming back before us for additional funding. And unless there are any other questions or comments, that would be about it.
Patrick Hayes. Oh, no?
Thought I had a last one.
Yep. No questions for Eric? No, thank you, Eric. Appreciate the update.
Yes, sir.
The next meeting is Wednesday, June 14th, 2023. And other than that, is there a motion to adjourn? Pat Hayes has made a motion to adjourn, and Risa Gray. And Risa Gray seconds it. Thank you very much, everyone, and have a great evening. Good job, Ken. Thank you for filling in there. Of favor, say aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.